Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We please stand for a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 7:33 PM, the 29th day of October. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room. Presiding Officer Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Mr. John Neese, Superintendent of Schools; Mr. Kenneth Copaz, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel; Dr. Gary Maeda, Board Secretary; Mr. Daniel Castle, School Business Administrator; Mr. Thomas Vigu, Jr., Assistant School Business Administrator; Dr. Dennis Degnan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction; and Mitchell Piscuel, our Board Counsel. A meeting is open to the public. I'll take a roll call. Trustee Alonzo.
President.
Trustee Casias.
Here.
Trustee Cruden.
Here.
Trustee Finerty.
Here.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Velado.
Here.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Here.
President Broderick. Here. For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least 48 hours, giving the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 6:30 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the Municipal Clerk of the City of Bayonne, Ms. Madewyn Medina.
Okay, we will start with our approval of minutes, acceptance of communications. Remind everyone that all our communications are on our bulletin board with all our resolutions. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
And a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and second on our minutes and communications. Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Casias.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
And President Broderick.
Yes.
I have a commendation that I would like to read into the record. Whereas Joseph Farley, a fifth grade student, has brought honor and distinction to Mary J. Donahue Community School and the entire community by his quick thinking which resulted in the saving of a life of a fellow student. Whereas the Board of Education wishes to recognize the outstanding achievements of Joseph Farley, be it hereby resolved that this Board of Education sincerely congratulates Joseph. And this is by the Committee of the whole. And Joseph, would you come up? Congratulations. It's an honor to meet you. You're sitting right here. Come back to me.
You sit here, Joe. Joseph, you sit here.
Sit right there, young man.
You get the king chair. Congratulations.
Everybody jump in, we'll get a photo.
Congratulations. Just myself, I'd like to congratulate Joe. And I'm gonna let him know anytime I go to a restaurant, maybe he could be around. Does anybody else would like to make a comment? Trustee.
Joe, I've trained to do that, and I've done that. And I'll tell you, as an adult who's been through training, my blood pressure was through the roof, my heart was in my mouth, literally. I think I had a heartbeat of 158 when I was doing it. You ought to be really congratulated for maintaining your composure and thinking to do that. To me, that's amazing that at your age you could pull that off.
Good job. So, Joseph, if you and your family would like, this would be the time that you can excuse yourselves unless you really want to stay. You're welcome to. But I'm sure you guys have homework. Before I start our resolutions, I'd like to invite to the podium Mr. Francis Labuti. Francis is the Bayonne High School Student Government Rep. This is his first meeting with us, but I'm sure he won't be a stranger. Francis, if you wanted to come up.
Good evening, Board of Ed trustees, Superintendent Neese, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Copaz, and Dr. Degnan. I'd like to begin by first introducing myself. My name is Francis Labuti, and I am serving as the Board of Ed representative for the 2019-2020 school year. Through this role, I hope to continuously inform the Board about the events hosted by the student government. We have recently hosted our annual homecoming dance, which was themed after the luxurious depiction of the roaring twenties in The Great Gatsby. Prior to the dance, upperclassmen were prompted to campaign for homecoming king and queen, which instilled a great sense of school spirit leading up to the event. We are pleased to say that we were able to increase the student participation in voting from prior years from 350 voters to 450. Following elections, we held our dance where we had 402 students attend to celebrate the kickoff for the Homecoming Spirit Week. At the end of the dance, Hakim Archibald and Brianna Hoffman were respectively named king and queen. After homecoming, the students had organized a spirit week, which students can express school spirit. Each day of the week had a different event allowing students the opportunity to express themselves. On the last day of Spirit Week, a fall pep rally was hosted to celebrate the achievements of the fall sports teams. During the pep rally, we had performances from the Bayonne Steppers, the cheerleaders, and the Bayonne High School band and choir. Following Spirit Week, we participated in the homecoming parade, where we marched with the marching band, steppers, and cheerleaders from City Hall to Veteran Stadiums, led by the homecoming king and queen, Mayor Davis, and Superintendent Neese. Once we arrived at vets, there was a ceremony to honor the seniors on the football team, cheerleading team, marching band, steppers, and the student government. Additionally, the student government has reinvented our social media presence headed by our social media chair, Max Sokolov. We have created an engaging Instagram account where we have taken polls about upcoming events for student suggestions, posted advice for this year's freshmen, and have worked with the morning announcement team to keep students up to date with upcoming school events. Please join us at bhs.stuga. Recently, the Executive Board has met with the superintendent to create a new slogan for the Board of Education. As a means of ensuring the slogan encapsulates the voices of everyone in the district, we took the task to our monthly General Assembly, where we requested input from the homecoming representatives. We received many suggestions, where we took them to our weekly Executive Board meeting and narrowed them down to 10 possible slogans. Afterwards, we reconvened with the superintendent and narrowed them down to the top three slogans. The slogans are as follows. Number one, "When you believe in great things happen." Number two, "Creating excellence one day at a time." Number three, "The youth of today, the leaders of tomorrow." This next step is to advertise the three choices on social media and have the public participation in a poll that would be posted on Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, and Snapchat, so we may reach as many people as possible. Lastly, the student government is organizing our annual Friday night, which has consistently been a successful and fun event for students over the past few years. This event usually has a great attendance from students of project independence to everyone else enrolled in general classes. This is particularly good to bring all the students in the school together in unity. This event will take place tomorrow from 6:00 to 9:00 PM in the main gym. Thank you for your continued support of the student government and your time today.
Same thing, Francis. You're welcome to stay. If you do have to go do some homework, you're welcome to leave. Good move. Okay, I'm gonna start with our first consent agenda item, which is our curriculum and instruction and policy resolutions. But I do have a few cards for resolutions in that category, so I bet we get our speakers out of the way. First, Mr. Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street, has a question on Resolution A27.
Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth.
But Anthony, before you start, just to read into the record, A27 is actually going to be tabled from our group of resolutions tonight, but you're still welcome to ask your question.
Like I said, Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street. My question is, I know that at the workshop it was said that it wouldn't cost us anything. Is the roof got guardrails and all safety measures for people going up and down?
Yes. Yeah, when they go up, yeah.
So then the roof itself also has the safety outriggers on the outside so that nobody can get too close enough to the edge, which is an OSHA policy?
That, I don't know. If it's tabled, then we're gonna see.
No, I get it. And I'm just saying, this is stuff since it is tabled, and we can look at it, because if that's something that this foundation is gonna pick up, then great. I mean, the idea is great. I'm just glad we're not the Tigers, because then we'd be looking to find a tiger somewhere.
That's a kid.
Or the Bolts. But so that, the logistics of obviously getting up and down from the roof with the kids, and then obviously the allergies for people that are allergic to bees and stuff, you know, what the proximity is and how the whole pattern is. The insurance premium, obviously that's adding a risk to kids coming to school here. So if that premium is gonna increase, who's picking up that cost? And then the liability, who has the ultimate liability for that bee hive up on the roof and what comes from it? So just want, since it's tabled, which I'm glad that it is, we're not rushing into a decision, which obviously goes to the new leadership, so I appreciate that. So if we can get those answered with the legality, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Anthony, I'm sorry I didn't catch you before you sat down, but Anthony's gonna come up again, 73 West Sixth Street, Resolutions A28 and A29.
So I gotta say my name again, or no?
No, you're fine.
All right, good. So talking with Dr. Degnan beforehand, I think this is a great idea. The only concern that I have is, I've seen this for the past couple of weeks that this was done, but this was the first time that I've seen it. I've seen it on cards passing around for the campaign that this was accomplished by certain people, but this is the first time I'm seeing it at a board meeting to get passed. So I'm curious on what's going on with the board and information. This is on a card for the incumbents' tickets as an accomplishment that they've done, and this is the first time that I'm seeing this, and I've been at all the board meetings. So I'm just wondering with the board leadership, what's going on? Are we, what are we doing? I mean, we're giving out information before it's even voted on, and you know, kinda gotta vote on it before we can take credit for it, right? Anybody?
Basically, that's been being worked on, and at our committee meetings, everything was agreed on at that point, so. Anyways, if there's any information that they'd like to give them.
So from a committee meeting, then we can distribute it publicly without it actually being voted on?
I don't really know what rules are with election rules. I think that would be something a lawyer would have.
I'm not talking about election rules. I'm talking about you guys as a board disclosing information that's not voted on. If it hasn't been voted on, it hasn't been done, so putting information that it's been done is false, so.
But that's election. That would be the Board of Elections.
Yeah, but still, a board member distributing information that hasn't been approved on, hasn't been brought in front of the board officially to vote on. So that's what my concern is, is that stuff that's being discussed that's not finalized is already out there. That's, to me, that's a leak. That's something that shouldn't be happening on a board.
You know what, Joe, I'll answer a question. Mr. D'Amico.
Do you want that microphone, please?
Oh. To the extent that information is disseminated by any committee or closed session, that is an issue. But you know, as Board Counsel, I can't counsel the general public with respect to the behavior of each trustee, the issue really comes down to whether or not, you know, it's ethical or unethical. As far as election conduct goes, that's a matter for the Board of Elections, and this Board is not gonna police election conduct.
No, I'm not. I'm not bringing it up for an election conduct. I'm bringing it up as the Board distributing information that's not actually voted on. Something hasn't happened, but Board members are putting it out there, whether it's election or not. It's still Board members putting out information that's discussed in the committee before it's voted on, before it's public. Whether it's an election or not, it's still Board members in that. Whether it's ethical or not, I mean, I'd like somebody to tell me yes or no if it is. Because that's still the Board's acting.
I can't tell you whether it's ethical or not, and I don't have all the facts right now. This is the first I'm seeing, this card. So it's something the Board can address.
Thank you.
But at this point, you know, this is news.
Thank you.
So we have our curriculum, resolutions, Resolutions A1 to A35. Resolution A27 is being tabled. Do I have a motion?
Move.
We have a motion from Trustee Velado. Do I have a second?
Yes.
And I have a second from Trustee Casias. So on that motion and second, on the curriculum agenda, Trustee Casias.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next up is our finance, building, and grounds resolutions, Resolutions B1 to B25. Do we have a motion?
Motion. My motion.
Motion by Trustee Ryan, and a second.
I'll second.
Second by President Broderick. On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next up is our finance, building, and grounds resolutions, Resolutions B1 to B25. Do we have a motion?
My motion.
Motion by Trustee Ryan, and a second.
I'll second.
Second by President Broderick. On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next up is our finance, building, and grounds resolutions, Resolutions B1 to B25. Do we have a motion?
My motion.
Motion by Trustee Ryan, and a second.
I'll second.
Second by President Broderick. On that motion and second, Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Casias.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Before I get to the personnel agenda, we have a question. Melissa Godzky Rodriguez, Resolution C33, she has a question. Could you please give us your address for the reporter?
Melissa Godzky Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F. So this is really just a question on C33. I'm very much in favor of training when it comes to special needs and looking in all of the different needs of our district. It says specifically on this resolution that it'll be for staff pertaining to one student. What are we looking at from an expansion on that training for some of our staff that do deal with one-on-one children with communication challenges as well?
This is, you've been driven for a specific student. We would have to look at how many children would fit the need of this specific device. And if that was a fit for our district or children of our district, absolutely we would do that.
Because I can tell you, just from my personal experience, and everybody knows as a parent, there are many children that would really benefit from us as a district looking at extending and expanding that type of training to some of our other staff members. I know, like we've been talking, and Mr. Neese has been super active in kind of getting a lot of these things through, so just kinda wanna put it out there, this is an amazing service, and I'm so grateful that we're approving something like this. We need to take these and kind of apply it to a few different areas throughout the district, and I'm sure Mr. Neese can agree with that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So going back to our resolutions for personnel, C1 to C39, and Resolution C23 is being tabled. So do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Trustee Cruden, seconded by.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded by Trustee Finerty. So I have a motion by Trustee Cruden, a second by Trustee Finerty. Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Casias.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Velado.
Yes.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Casias.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
And then my final resolution, D2 is being added, whereas the Board of Education's Residency Committee held a residency hearing on October 29, 2019, to determine whether a student was properly docile in Bayonne so as to entitle him or her to attend Bayonne Public School. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Motion by Trustee Alonzo.
I'll second it.
Do I have a second? And a second by Trustee Casias. On that motion and second, Trustee Velado.
Hi.
Trustee Alonzo.
Yes.
Trustee Casias.
Yes.
Trustee Cruden.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Munoz is absent. Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Vice President Wilbeck.
Yes.
President Broderick.
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our business, but I do have some questions for the open period. If you'd please come up to the microphone, Ms. Lynn Palowski, 128 West 26th Street, has a question.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Palowski, 128 West 26th Street. I'd like to address you fine folks about the aftercare program. My children have now been in the school district for four years, and I'm a single mother with two children. We have 25 days of breaks during the school year, 18 half-days. That would require me to take 37 personal time-off days to take care of my children while there's no school in session. I think it's about nine of those are staff training, or actually, maybe more of that, I'm sorry. So my question is, last year or the year before, we had aftercare program for the students where we could pay into to keep them while our staff members are training, and that was taken away. I do realize that it was a bit costly, but at least it supported those of us that have to work and cannot take all that time off of work. And I realize it may not have been very popular because of the number of, you know, families that maybe not, could not afford that, but I'm hoping that you all would consider bringing something like that back, because it's impossible to find childcare for all of those days while the staff is in training.
You're right, we should do that. We should.
Great.
I get your contact info.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
We should figure that out.
May I speak on another issue?
Go ahead.
Okay. My second question is pertaining to testing space and having enough room in our facilities for students to have gym for the required hour and a half a week that's mandated by law. It seems that in many of the schools, there's not enough space for the students to test in quiet and allowing our younger children to exert the energy that they so desperately need to get out of their systems. Consequently, they're sitting in front of a movie and/or quietly sitting, and so the older students can test, and I believe that both populations need to be served, and that's not happening.
Thousand percent agree, and we are working to present, like we said at the last meeting, like in October, so I'm hoping we have something for the community that we can kind of alleviate the space issues.
What is the average amount of days per school testing?
That I don't know. I see, hold on. Please, one or five, five days for elementary, another five days for middle school. We almost do about 10 or 11 for the high school. You're right, it's a lot of testing time.
And then they have the makeup days.
Yes.
And that, I mean, I know, my children go to one of the largest schools, and the entire multipurpose room is closed for that, and the kids can't make noise in the gym because they're just down the hall.
And this is correct. This is correct, because we are going to need a plan, because we did increase enrollment with pre-K, which is taking up space, and we come time to testing season. As a testing coordinator, I understand there has to be rooms for the special needs five or at-risk students, so it is a plan that we're going to have to address as a curriculum committee and Board of the whole. You're correct.
Very glad to hear. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Melissa Godzky Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F, is an open question about air control monitors at a Resco school.
Melissa Godzky Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F. So first of all, I want to thank Superintendent Neese for addressing that issue immediately and timely. It was a breath of fresh air, to say the least. And I read in the communication that there would be air quality control monitors put in, and we would monitor that. Are we being supplemented by the city or those developers for any costs that we may incur from those monitors?
No. Here's the reason why, because we met with the contractor, and ladies and gentlemen, we put out a letter in reference to same, and it details all the OSHA, POCIA, the city. There's a lot of monitoring going on at the construction site, but as a parent, as someone who would be close to that, you know, you want extra assurances, so we are going to hire an air quality contractor to put up. You may think that's too much or excessive, but we're talking about the most valuable asset we have, and we're gonna go over the top. So I think that's the right thing to do.
And I fully agree, so thank you, just for clarification. And we're gonna do the most we can do with what we have for those students, because that was my biggest concern, is I can't imagine what kind of material would be flying into that air. And is there a plan going forward regarding any of that construction during school, when school does reopen?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there is. In fact, they're going over the top to actually allow our principal or one of us to go over and say, okay, on these days, we're gonna be testing, and they'll put the hammer down, meaning not get working really hard, but they're gonna stop working so we can do our school business. The world's in a perfect place, right? Things are gonna happen, but we want to make sure we do everything we can to protect the most precious assets we have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then just one more question, and I guess this goes for our lawyer. Any additional information you may need that there was information prior to what you just spoke with Mr. D'Amico, can that be forwarded to you as well, of any other information that may have been out to the public?
No.
I won't speak publicly on it.
Right, I wouldn't take that information. It's not, you know, within purview of Board Counsel.
Okay.
If you feel it's an issue that you have, that you want to raise, that you need to If you feel is an issue that you have, that you wanna raise, that you need to make complaint, that's for each individual to decide.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next question, if you still wanna come up, Megan Luzi. They answered that, so I thought, okay. Uh, Anthony D'Amico, seventy-three West Sixth, has an open question.
This was going back to the workshop for, uh, Ms. Finerty, the not-to-exceed, um, for that inline, is just saying that over the year, they can't exceed that number, I think it was five hundred thousand, 'cause I remember asking that question at the meeting. So it's not that they have a five hundred thousand dollar budget to work from, it's, they can't exceed that five hundred thousand dollar number. That's how a not-to-exceed in construction works. So your proposals, I'm sure the facilities, we use them, but no matter what they are, they cannot charge more than that set amount. So it's not that they have it and they're not clipping coupons, but it's, they can't charge you no matter what above that amount. Uh, the other thing is, um, meeting with Ms., uh, Mr. Castles and Ms. Pegu, I just wanna say that welcome for, for you, 'cause, I mean, I know I was told that you were on a while ago, which was a miscommunication, but, um, it was definitely something that I just wanna put out there, as I recommend to anybody who has any questions, is they're open, they're forthcoming, they'll explain everything to you, and going over the budget with them, you know, you don't have to be a budget expert or anything like that, they work with you. I just wanna say, great job, and I really appreciate that you're here.
Thank you. Next up, Katie Frank, one seventy West Seventeenth Street.
Hello. Katie Frank, one seventy West Seventeenth Street. My question is, um, I've noticed, um, my son's now in second grade, and the district is still using the Basil readers, the Journeys readers, and I know that those have shown, uh, that they've worked in the past, but truth be told, um, they, they don't really align anymore with what we're expecting our students to learn. Not only that, but it's not differentiated. I find that a lot of the students struggle to get through it, their stories are not interesting, they're extremely boring, and also our students who are on the higher level have to sit back and they have to wait for the other students in the classroom to catch up so that they can move on. I think it's time that the district looked into something a little more now, and looked into maybe like a Lucy Quachan model, and did a readers writers workshop, so that we can hit all of the students on their level, they get to read books on their level, and we could see our students grow, and our struggling readers and our struggling writers would get the help that they need as well.
We just invested in a science program for this year, we're investing in a mathematics program for next year. Ms. Frank is correct, if we could in the third year go for ELA, we have our, have you articulated this to the director of English Language Arts?
We have not.
We have not. I mean, that's a good place to start, to give your concerns, to go write to Director Wayne and explain to her what you're seeing, but we've made a major infusion in early childhood education, we've invested in Bob's book, we've invested in the DRA III, which is the diagnostic, the iReady. We have also invested in, um, foundations, our boning program.
Yeah, and my son, my son does foundations, but he also gets pulled, so he gets pulled and he works with a fabulous reading specialist, but it's separate from the foundations.
But I would also say, are you, are you communicating this with the teacher? Are you speaking with the principal?
Well, yeah.
Because I don't wanna say it's everywhere.
Right. No, but I'm saying that the Basil readers are, are outdated. I mean, I look at my son's book, and I think the cock right on it was nineteen eighty-eight.
Right, and as the curriculum committee, we, we understand, uh, there are needs for textbooks throughout the district, and we will, and I, I brought this to the curriculum committee, that I would like to be on a cycle. Again, I have to work with the new BA and, you know, financially, but again, I would ask you to, again, reach out to the director of English Language Arts, your honor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And our final question is Mr. Joe Wyatt, three oh one Maple Avenue, uh, North Plainfield, New Jersey.
And this at last is the gift of Chernobyl. Where I once would fear the cost of truth, now I only ask, what is the cost of lies? And I've, uh, in previous, uh, board meetings, I've said the cost of our lies are the education of our children and the future of our children. And so now we're gonna start, I'm gonna start to enumerate those lies and what they cost. And I thought at first to, to ask you, do you, are you aware of the lies that we tell ourselves? But I realize I'm not supposed to talk to you, so, uh, that's kind of hard to do. But, uh, one of the lies we tell ourselves is in the recent unpleasant financial crisis, at the end of that crisis, the president of the board said, well, it is the way it is. And that's, while it's not a lie, it's kind of a half-truth or a non-truth. Uh, if you go into my classroom and ask my students, why is the physical world the way it is, they will tell you it is the way, because it is the way it is. If you then ask them, what is the, uh, why is the human world the way it is, they will tell you that because somebody said so, and we agreed with it. So this whole financial crisis was, uh, somebody, because somebody said so, some human being made a decision, and we went along with it. And I still do not, to this day, understand what happened. So there has been no, uh, there's been no investigation that, that, and no responsibility. One of the problems with this school district is we have, people have absolute power, but no, but not absolute responsibility. And in most places where you have absolute power, you have absolute responsibility. And that, so what happened was, then it, that cascaded into a series of events, and I realize the reason that was said is so we could move on, but we can't move on while this thing festers inside and creates mistrust and under, misunderstanding. It still is, is, it created a mistrust for me. I don't know who to trust anymore, because it was never clearly delineated what happened and who was responsible for it. Um, and it caused, uh, long-term impact on our school system, because one of the things we, oh, and also, the, the solution we, we decided on, we decided 'cause it was fair. We laid off two hundred and sixty-five people, because we were unwilling to identify the seventy people that we really had to get rid of. And what happened was, when you laid off two hundred and sixty-five people, that created enormous uncertainty in the faculty, and what that did is then the people who were good, they, they couldn't wait for you to make a decision. They went and got another job. So we lost the, and then we rehired people, but what we did is we lost the valuable faculty that were, that were well-educated and knew what they were doing. They went somewhere else, because we couldn't endure the, uh, they couldn't endure the uncertainty. We create, we, we create in this school district enormous uncertainty financially and academically[1710.51]